And welcome to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners work session this March 8, 2022. Today, we have an item to receive a presentation from our Finance Department regarding department and agency presentations as part of the 2324 biennial budget cycle. During yesterday's agenda session, we've agreed to forego discussing transportation so we can focus on budget today. So we'll just receive this one item for this meeting.
Thank you Chairwoman, and good afternoon Chairwoman Commissioners. I just want to start off the meeting by wanted to thank county staff for their hard work in preparing and reviewing and presenting the FY23 budget requests. The presentation's in total over 740 pages, and that link is on the Cobb County Finance page. And I would also like to thank the Board of Commissioners for giving everyone the opportunity to present and be heard. Okay, so this process kicked off, starting with the BOC retreat in 2021. We received direction from the Board of Commissioners to begin a new budget process where all departments publicly present their budget requests. So those presentations began on September 14 of 2021 and concluded on February 22, 2022. Of the county's 42 departments, 32 presented during these work sessions, and in addition, the Cobb Douglas Board of Health also presented, and the DFAX Agency also walked the halls with the Commissioners to discuss their requests. Of the departments that did not present either did not have a requested increase or chose to walk the halls because they had a very small increase, those include the Board of Commissioners Budget, County Clerk, the County Manager, County Attorney, Internal Audit, Ethics Board, State Court, Circuit Defender, Solicitor, and the Community Service Block Grant. So all in all, you heard from 32 departments and one external agency at the work sessions. Okay, so what I want to show you first is the Cobb County operating budget. This is a summary broken down into the categories of governmental funds and business-type funds. A couple of things I want to call to your attention. In 2021 was the first year Cobb County exceeded $1 billion in their operating budget. Okay? And then, one of the things I also want to point out to you is at the very bottom here, you'll see the full-time positions added. 2018, it was 30, and 2019 was 114. That followed the 2018 millage rate increase that was passed by the Board of Commissioners. Since then, we've added 19 in '20, 0 in '21, and 4 in 2022. The far right column, you'll see the requested full-time positions. Again, this is across all county funds for 2023, is 658 positions. Please note that the numbers above and the numbers throughout the entire presentation do not include the results from the current class and pay study, which is ongoing, and we expect to have those numbers by the end of April of 2022. And it does not include an updated employee roster, as we'll wait to take that snapshot after the March step in grade, compression adjustments for public safety, as well as the merit. So we'll take a snapshot in April and provide, so these numbers are expected to increase based on just those two factors alone. Okay. All right, I'm going to take some time and let you kind of digest this slide. One of the things that we wanted to do with this presentation is give you the full picture break, broken down by the funds. A lot of times, we spend a lot of focus and time and energy on the General Fund and Fire Fund, so we wanted to show you all of the funds. So you'll see the each of the funds listed here, as well as the 2022 adopted and the 2023 requested. This is, the important note here is this is simply expenditures. So we'll get into revenues a little bit later, but this is the ask for increase in expenditures as we go forward. The governmental funds, you'll see the total increase is $159.9 million, General Fund making up the lion's share of that at $133.8 million. Again, the reminder is that this does not include the new class and pay study. So we'll have some detailed slides as you're kind of looking over this that we'll go over a little later on the General Fund, the Fire Fund, as well as the 911 Fund. So I'm going to just pause for a few minutes as you look over this slide.
Bill, are you following the printout that you sent us?
I'm sorry?
Nothing, never mind.
Okay, so in front of you today, you should have a detail of the General Fund by department. So that's, that's going to be a large document, but we gave you the General Fund breakdown by department, personnel, operating capital, and so on. We wanted you to have that as additional information. We did not want to walk through each one of those today with you, but we wanted to have that so you could take it with you as you, as you go through these. This is the fund summary. So the other handout that you'll have in front of you is the personnel request by department and then also by fund. So we have those as well. But no, I'm not, that was additional information, so we'll get through this presentation, and if you have any questions about the handout, we definitely can go over that as well. So that makes, is that okay?
Where is this in either of the?
Sorry?
Printouts you sent us?
The printouts that you have in front of you today are, is going to be when we get to the General Fund. The big printout that you have is just simply the General Fund request. So when we go to this, you'll see $133.8 million for the General Fund. You have the detail of that broken down by department to show you personnel operating capital.
Okay.
Okay? So this is a summary, and then you have the?
This is just all the individual departments' presentations?
That's correct. Oh, and the link I sent you, yes, is the 740-plus pages is every department presentation. I want to make sure everyone had a copy. I know the departments handed out hard copies, as well as sent you electronic ones, but we put it all together, and it is on the Finance website, so anybody can access it, including the public.
Great.
Okay. All right. One of the other funds that I do want to call to your attention, just because sometimes we don't spend a lot of time on it, and if you don't reckon, recognize what it is, don't want you to be caught off guard, is the Claims Fund that you see up here. This is the county's internal funding for health for employees, as well as claims for liability, as in losses, and workers' comp. So that's something that we basically have zero to, little to zero control over this increase. This is based, set on rates by outside providers, which would be our healthcare rates from our medical providers, as well as our insurance rates that we receive to the county. All right, I'm going to move on to the business-type funds, and then we're going to spend some more time on these individually. So here's the business-type funds that we have in front of you. So the business-type funds, we're looking at $18.2 million increase as being requested. And again, the total for all funds is $178 million overall. Just one thing to note with this fund, with these funds, the Transit Fund, you'll see it's a $4.2 million request. As you know, Transit is highly subsidized by the General Fund, and this would have a General Fund impact in the future if this was approved. So I just want to call that to your attention as we go forward, is that this would have an adverse impact on the General Fund. But again, it's part of the General Fund's plan is to subsidize transit operations like any other transit operations throughout the nation. So I'll pause here briefly and let you look at this. These are pretty flat with the exception of water. And Commissioners, I will send you a copy of this presentation, and it will be posted on the Finance website at the end of the day. Okay. All right, so now we're going to get into some more detail specifically on the General Fund. So we've already talked about the $133 million that you see in the bottom right-hand corner of this slide. That's the proposed increase, and you'll also see it broken down by personnel, operating capital, debt service transfers out in contingency. Please note of the, of the requests, you'll see a $52 million increase to personnel. This includes 515 new positions within the General Fund. Commissioner?
Please. Okay, I'm going to number you.
Okay.
On this sheet here, this is 515, but if you go back to one of your first couple slides before this?
Yes.
It says 658.
That is correct. This slide is for all funds throughout the county, and the 515 is General Fund only. So that's a great point. The 658 here is including all funds throughout the county, and of the 658, 515 is General Fund.
Okay, so where's the breakdown then of the other 100 and some?
It is in the handout that I gave you, and then we'll touch on some of the other funds as well. So, okay, I'm sorry. Then we'll provide that as in addition for all the Commissioners, but we'll touch on some of the other funds as we go throughout this. Sorry, that's, that's my fault. Okay, so again, General Fund has 515 positions of the 600-plus that we have on the total slide. Again, just a reminder, this does not include the class and pay study. The total cost for the last class and pay study that was done in 2016 was $20.4 million to kind of give you an idea of what that was. The study was never, never fully implemented. We did about half of that. So that just gives you an idea of kind of what we potentially could be looking at as we move forward. It could be more, it could be less, but obviously, we won't get those numbers until April. So with that study being excluded, you're still looking at a $52.8 million increase in personnel, $38.8 million increase in operating, and a big significant, or significant increase in capital of $40.1 million. I think from the presentations that we've heard over the last several months, capital has been a big factor, as well as personnel. The only negative that you'll note on this line is a reduction in contingency. And if you remember, a part of the 2022 budget, we approved a $1 million contingency for the County Manager to address compression for non-public safety positions. We removed that, and there's some other contingency adjustments, but we removed that anticipating that the class and pay study would address those, those issues. Okay, so please keep in mind, you're looking at $138.8 million for requested expenditures. But on the other side of that, we've done early projections, and this is based on our current millage rate for the General Fund, as it is already approved today. Projections will be updated throughout the spring months as digest information becomes available. So we do expect these to change, but we want at least to give you a starting point of where we stand today. The requested expenditures exceed projected revenues by $79.8 million. Now, this is very important. This is not a budget shortfall, okay? This is just simply, this is your request, and we know fine-tuning has to take place, as well as Commissioner input. So this is not a budgetary shortfall, these have not been approved. This is just simply their initial requests that you've heard to date versus the initial revenue projections, because again, we do expect the revenue projections to change. Steve White will be giving an update on the digest at the end of March. So this is just kind of your starting point where we start to have discussions. A big piece of this, as you'll know, that of the $54 million that we project this to increase, 36.9 of this is in property taxes. Of that, a large portion of that is due to the TAVT collection. I know Mr. Tessar discussed that at the Board of Commissioners Retreat as an unbalanced issue. This is something the county has taken a very conservative stance and moved up slowly over the years, and we have continued to see positive growth in this area. So we were able to plus this up, not to mention the sustained digest growth that we've had for the last couple of years, and expect, and as we move forward for 2022. Most of the other revenues have just been adjusted based on trend and collection histories as we walk through those. I'll pause and let you look at those and see if there's any specific categories you'd like us to address, but again, this is the initial starting point, and we do anticipate these changing as we move forward. Questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the Fire Fund.
Sorry, Bill, can you just go back?
Absolutely, sorry. Please take your time.
Bill, can you just explain what the transfers in include?
Absolutely. The transfers in, a large portion of our transfers in come from servicing the stadium bond debt service, specifically the other revenue sources that fund it, fund that debt service. We would look at things such as CSSD-1, the $3 room night fee that comes as a portion of that debt service payment, CSSD-2, the property tax component that's tied to that debt service payment, hotel motel transfers that also are tied to that debt service payment. And then, we also have reimbursements for SPOLOs for personnel. And then, one of the biggest areas that we always focus in on is the water transfer. So the transfer in from the Water Fund to subsidize the General Fund, this does anticipate that being reduced by 1% as we move forward. So we are, we are dropping that here, even though you do see a slight increase in that overall. The water transfer is proposed to reduce by 1% as we move forward. And we can give you, we're happy to give you the initial breakdown of what the transfers in include, but those are the main categories.
How much is the 1% though?
The 1% reduction in water transfer is roughly about $2.4 million, but it is based on percentage of previous year revenue. And if the Board recalls, we did approve a water rate effective January 1, so we're going to monitor and see what that rate looks like. And I would say the $2.4 million is roughly based on the revenue prior to that rate increase. So we initially just reduced it by $2.4 million as a placeholder as we finalize those revenue numbers. And as you know, with the Water Fund, the biggest revenue generating months are in the summer months. If it's dry, we see a spike in revenue. So we're still very early in that new revenue phase with the new rate, so we're working closely with water to monitor those as we move forward.
Okay.
Any other questions on this slide? Good, okay. All right, so we're moving on to the summary of the revenues and expenditures for the Fire Fund. Unlike the General Fund, I have this all in one slide, so hopefully, it's not too busy for you. The Fire Fund's requesting 48 new positions. Again, the revenue projections are based on the millage rate that was approved as part of the 2022 budget. I have this worded very specifically because, if you remember, as a part of the 2022 budget, it contemplated a shift in the millage rate of 0.13 mils from the debt service fund, which was servicing our parks bond debt, and we have collected enough money at the close of 2021 that we are legally not allowed to collect this. So part of the 2022 budget was shifting that millage and proposing it to go to Fire. So that's why I wanted to say, make sure that was clear. It's not the approved existing Fire millage rate, it is the approved millage rate that was in the 2022, which contemplates this shift as we move forward. The requested expenditures exceed current projection, projected revenues by $7.3 million. Now, one of the things that I do want to kind of pause here, and we'll address later, is that these numbers do not contemplate any cityhoods taking place, and we're going to touch on that a little bit later. So the only cityhood that's being proposed that would have an impact on Fire is the City of East Cobb, so I will touch on that a little bit later, but please note that these numbers today is as if things are exactly the same as they are right now, where no additional cities, no additional impact to the Fire millage, and so on. So just kind of want you to look at these numbers. We are working closely with Fire as we move forward to see how we can possibly smooth some of this out. The areas that we're looking at is capital. That may be something that we look at to bring some of these items forward a little sooner, and that way, it would reduce our 2023 requests. But we're working through that process, but the request that you heard and Fire presented is what you see in front of you today. So we're just looking at, how do we smooth that out so you don't have large peaks and valleys in the capital request as we go forward? Okay. I'm going to leave this up for a few minutes and see if there's any questions on this slide. Okay. I'm going to move on to our 911 Fund. This is a fund that we don't spend a lot of time talking about. It is in a little bit unique position. They do have a position request of 47 new positions. If you look across, the revenue projections are relatively flat. The reason that they are that way is because the revenues are based on a $1.50 maximum amount that we can charge, and we don't, at least right now, that is obviously set by the state. So we do not have direction that that has changed to date. It is something that is being discussed at the, at the capital, correct Jimmy? That is correct. So this is where we have to have some discussions, is based on the request and assuming the rate doesn't change, they would be at a $3.8 million shortfall. I'm sorry, I'm not going to use the word shortfall. The requested expenditures exceed the projected revenues by $3.8 million. 3.7 of that is the personnel request. So just wanted to let you know that that is something that we would have to look at. So assuming the rate stays the same, this would require outside funding. If the rate increases, it would be something that they could potentially handle as we move forward. So that is something we'll have to watch.
What, what is the maximum we can charge?
A $1.50 currently. They are discussing raising that at the capital. So that's where we currently land today is $1.50, so we really don't have any flexibility on our existing revenues unless that were to change.
And we were under that up until 3, 4?
Yes, we were at $1.25. That's correct. Okay? Any other questions on this slide? Very good. Okay, so I'm going to move on to kind of some of our next phases that we're going to approach. Board of Commissioner requests. Board of Commissioners, we encourage you to discuss any requests that are not already, any requests that you all may have that have not already been presented by the departments. So we would like you to have those conversations in the month of March. So if there's anything that you've heard throughout the budget presentations that, or that was anything that you wanted to entertain that was missing from those presentations, we'd like you to have those conversations with the departments. Definitely, please include us on that so we can facilitate the opening of Open Gov to account for those requests. And then, what we commit to the Board is that if there are any requests that come forward through departments, that those requests are shared with the entire Board. So if one Commissioner brings a request forward and works, let's say, through DOT, we would share that with the entire Board, so you're aware of those. And we will do that at the close of March, and that way, you'll have a full updated request list of, hey, if there were any Commissioner requests from the Chair, from any District Commissioner, that we would include those so you could have those as part of your consideration as we move forward.
Sounds good. One thing that has come up around our SPOLOs programs, our new buildings without funding for corresponding personnel, has that been contemplated with the budget requests?
So I believe those have been included in the departmental requests. They were asked to look at any, any areas where they would need their additional personnel or operating, so that should include buildings that are coming online. I know for a fact, Fire, they, in their position of request, they do contemplate some fire stations coming online and additional requests for personnel.
Okay.
We also, well, I'll leave it at that, that's fine. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Just if, you know, the Board, if we do have any requests for facilities, just asking for your help in ensuring we have corresponding budget requests, so we don't run into issues with trying to determine how we cover personnel.
Absolutely, and we'll reiterate that with the departments and make sure that, we'll reiterate that with the departments.
Somebody's looking for an additional revenue source.
That was commercial break.
County insurance.
Okay, sorry.
Is our silver equal?
Yes. And I want to apologize to Commissioner Richardson, I have exceeded my 15 minutes. But I am almost done.
Oh, this was supposed to be just 15 minutes? Did he say that yesterday?
I think I, I was asking.
Okay, that's right.
So, so I, I want to, I have two more slides. So I'm getting close. All right. All right, so next steps, we are going to begin meeting with the Board to discuss options to address the differences between the projected revenues and the requests. We will receive final class and pay numbers, hopefully in April is our plan. We will have final numbers for healthcare and pension in May. And again, we're going to begin adjusting the revenue numbers based on the digest as we get more information available. So the first, next round of adjustments will be at the end of March, when Steve White, the Tax Assessor, provides our first projection, and he'll continue to update us through, from then until June as we get the final digest. So again, you've received the requests from departments, we're going to include requests from the Commissioners, we're going to go sit down and revise the budget based on the Commission's priorities, and then we'll present the final budget in July. So with that, we have some key dates that we want to call to your attention, and this is our proposed budget calendar as we move forward. One of the unique items that you'll see on there is the cityhood election on May 24. The reason that this is important is because on June 27, our ads for the millage rate and the 23 proposed budget are due to the MDJ. On May 24, if one or three or two of the cities are approved, that would have an impact on our revenues, but also our requests. So we will have basically a four-week window to adjust based on what is approved on May 24. That is something that we've already worked with the departments very closely to identify what those are, so they can be easily pulled out. So if one city's created, we can pull it out. If three are created, we can pull it out very easily. So we will identify, we are identifying those costs, so we know we have a tight turnaround for that. On June 27, we talked about when the ads are due. One thing to remind the Board is when we send that ad off, whatever the millage rate is, you cannot adopt above that advertised rate. You can adopt below, you just cannot go above that. Okay? So if we advertise at, let's say, whatever the millage rate you want, we advertise that, you just cannot go above the advertised rate. Okay? But I think several of you've had that experience where we've seen it go down, you just can't go up. Okay? And then, on June 28 will be the first time, the work session at 1:30, where we'll be presenting the 23 proposed budget. June 30, the ads will run in the MDJ for the 2022 millage and the 2023 proposed budget. The first public hearing on the proposed budget and millage will be at the regular scheduled meeting on July 12 at 9:00 a.m. We'll have our second public hearing on the millage rate on July 19 at 6:30. That is a special call meeting, so please note that on your calendars. And then, we, on July 26, will be our third and final public hearing on the 2022 millage rate, and we'll adopt the 2023 proposed budget, as well as the 2022 millage rate. So that is our timeframe. So you can see there's a lot that's got to happen between now and the 1st of June. Okay? Is there any questions from the Board?
Just an observation. I know a few years past, there was some question about notice for public hearings.
Yes.
Only one public hearing is required, from my recollection?
That's correct.
That needs to be noticed per the code. I don't know if that's why the second one is being referred to as a special call.
No, that is a very good point. So we have three public hearings for the millage as required. You're required to have one public hearing for the budget. So that's how we, we handle that.
Okay, so clarify that, one for the budget?
Yes.
And then, three for the millage?
That is correct. So our, again, the one that we will have on the budget will be on July 12, but that'll also be our first one for the millage. We'll have our second one for the millage on July 19, and our third and final for the millage on July 26, which is also the night we adopt.
Yes, it becomes so easily conflated. We used to do these different time periods.
That's correct.
And, you know, in some of the hearings, we're just solely speaking on that millage rate, and some of them, we are actually listening to requests or concerns about the actual substance of the budget.
Absolutely, and we'll work very closely with the Board to see how you want to handle those presentations, and we've seen it done several different ways in the past, so we'll just seek direction from the Board of how this Board would like us to move forward. But those are the dates, we're very flexible on presentations, but the public hearings are pretty much, are set in stone. We, we don't have any flexibility on those dates. We plan these out a year in advance to make sure that we meet the, the county code requirements.
Any questions or comments, Commissioners?
So if one city's created, we can pull it out. If three are created, we can pull it out very easily. So we will identify... We are identifying those costs, so we know we have a tight turnaround for that. On June 27, we talked about when the ads are due. One thing to remind the board is, when we send that ad off, whatever the millage rate is, you cannot adopt above that advertised rate. You can adopt below, you just cannot go above that. Okay? So if we advertise at, let's say, whatever the millage rate you want to... We advertise that, you just cannot go above the advertised rate. Okay? But I think several of you've had that experience where we've seen it go down, you just can't go up. Okay? And then, on June 28, will be the first time at the work session at 1:30, where we'll be presenting the 23 proposed budget. June 30, the ads will run in the MDJ for the 2022 millage and the 2023 proposed budget. The first public hearing on the proposed budget and millage will be at the regular scheduled meeting on July 12 at 9:00 a.m. We'll have our second public hearing on the millage rate on July 19 at 6:30. That is a special called meeting, so please note that on your calendars. And then, on July 26, will be our third and final public hearing on the 2022 millage rate, and we'll adopt the 2023 proposed budget, as well as the 2022 millage rate. So that is our timeframe. So you can see there's a lot that's got to happen between now and the 1st of June. Okay? Is there any questions from the board?
Just an observation. I know a few years past, there was some question about notice for public hearings.
Yes.
Only one public hearing is required, from my recollection.
That's correct.
That needs to be noticed per the code. I don't know if that's why the second one is being referred to as a special called.
No, that is a very good point. So we have three public hearings for the millage as required. You're required to have one public hearing for the budget. So that's how we handle that.
Okay, so clarify that, one for the budget?
Yes.
And then three for the millage?
That is correct. So again, the one that we will have on the budget will be on July 12, but that'll also be our first one for the millage. We'll have our second one for the millage on July 19, and our third and final for the millage on July 26, which is also the night we adopt.
Yes, it becomes so easily conflated. We used to do these different time periods.
That's correct.
And, you know, in some of the hearings, we're just solely speaking on that millage rate, and some of them, we are actually listening to requests or concerns about the actual substance of the budget.
Absolutely, and we'll work very closely with the board to see how you want to handle those presentations, and we've seen it done several different ways in the past, so we'll just seek direction from the board of how this board would like us to move forward. But those are the dates, we're very flexible on presentations, but the public hearings are pretty much... Are set in stone. We don't have any flexibility on those dates. We plan these out a year in advance to make sure that we meet the county code requirements.
Any questions or comments, Commissioners? I was looking forward to robust discussion on this. Maybe we just heard everything we needed to hear during the budget presentations, or perhaps there's a lot more to take in after today.
Absolutely.
Well, we have 746 pages.
46 pages. And please keep in mind, that is the summary. 746 pages is your summary. You all should have access to OpenGov as well, and we are happy to provide you any additional information, but please note, we'll be reaching out following this meeting to start scheduling meetings with you all to have conversations of how you'd like to see us move forward, and also importantly, to discuss priorities or requests that are not currently included in the budget to date.
Bill, the departments prioritize their requests?
Yes, so they... In the presentations, you don't have... I don't think they did it in a prioritization order, but we have asked that they prioritize, because we know that you asked for the... What is the request? What is the need? And we understand that, you know, that just because you put a request forward doesn't mean that's what's going to be approved. So they are prepared to have in-depth conversations with the board to discuss their priorities of, hey, if we don't get our full request, where... What is our priority list, and how do we look to reduce that request?
Okay.
So, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Commissioners? On the first summary page of positions, these are all new positions, not vacant or unfilled positions.
That is correct. These are all new full-time positions.
Full-time.
Full-time. This does not include the vacancies. So that is one of the keys when we talk about that updated employee roster. When we take that snapshot, just note, vacancies are funded at 50%. So these position requests, because we anticipate them to be filled the first year, because any new position request, we fund at 100%. And then the next year, if they're not filled, then they get funded at 50. So that's just our... That's standard practice of... Because we have a natural turnover throughout the county. Okay?
Yes, Commissioner?
You may or may not be able to answer, it's kind of jumping the gun on the class and pay study, but in contemplating these numbers, general feeling, I mean, we all are in our spaces, we know what competitive pay kind of looks like, are we thinking, you know, plus 50%, plus 100%? Like plus or minus? I'm really just looking at, what's the contingency that I should be mindful of?
So I don't think we're to the point where we have a good feel for that. I know in previous Board of Commissioners retreats, I think HR Director Tony Hagler shared that, and across the board, I think we're roughly around 8% under, is what he's used as kind of that initial benchmark. We're obviously looking for Evergreen to provide us, you know, an up-to-date in comparison against other counties, so that is something we're going to look at. Now, a couple of things to note that are a little bit different than the last time we did the class and pay study. At this point, at that time, we did not have a stepping grade for public safety, which is roughly half of our personnel. So we're hopeful that that... What the steps the board has already taken will lessen that impact, but we don't know yet. I think the earliest we anticipate having those meetings, and I'll check... Randy Crowder can keep me honest, I believe at the end of the month, they're going to come and have those initial conversations with the department heads to review their information. Randy, am I getting... Not? Okay, yes. But I don't think we have any idea what that number's going to be yet. That's why I wanted to show you what the last one was, and just remind you again, that even though it was 20.4 million, it wasn't fully implemented, we did like 10, 10 and a half of it. So we do have some ground to cover, but we'll see what that looks like when we get the data. And I believe they're going to come before the board and do a presentation on options and costs and things, because that's also part of it, is what... You know, you may have three options, which option you select will have its own unique price tag.
Okay, thank you. And the other big question I'll probably reserve for a follow-up.
Sure, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
Well, Commissioners, thank you for your time. Chairwoman, thank you for your time. Thank you for sitting through the hours and hours of budget presentations. I would like to say we're almost done. Unfortunately, we're not.